All right. Congratulations, we made it. Sorry I'm late. Uh, Kelly, we have a call to order.
I would like to say that I am also.
Sorry? We've had a call to order. Could we have a roll, please?
Trustee Broderick. Trustee Budzinski. Trustee Garcia-Guian. Trustee Lee.
Present.
Trustee Lozano.
Here.
Trustee Mahalik. Trustee Morales.
Here.
Trustee O'Connell.
Here. All right. We don't need any more secretaries. We've got enough. Everybody, welcome. Here we are. Moving along. Pledge of Allegiance. Any volunteers? I know Joan's here. We're gonna have Pledge of Allegiance, though.
We always have somebody start it. I think Joan.
Quiet, quiet. So Joan, start the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Dan.
To the flag, the United States. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Public comments. We have no public comments? Other than, uh...
Public comment.
No public comments?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's okay. It's all right. Nobody will shoot. Nobody's shooting.
We have a public now?
Yes, sir. Well, you know, I don't know. Who is that who's asking? Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Robert Wonderlick, Illinois.
Thank you.
Chairman of this board for forty-five years. My comment would be, I would like to thank Board of Trustees, and especially Ms. Joan Tierney for being here for all the time she served as the Secretary to the Board, and previously the Secretary for the President. She did a fine job. She did excellent work, and she deserves a round of applause.
Well, you're welcome, Joan. We do have a few more words for you if, uh, if, uh, anybody else would care. So if you know Joan, you know that, uh, she has her values. Commitment, compassion, kindness. While I know she never seeks the spotlight, it is important to tell to tell me and to tell us all, take a moment and note the incredible impact she had on the Board of Trustees, her colleagues in the College over the past twenty-five years. For years Joan has served as first face. You see, when you enter the President's office, it is her welcome nature, warmth, smile, immediate, immediately takes over wherever it is, and their presence is valued and supported where but their needs may be, whatever their needs may be. Her attention to detail, knowledge, board governance, and a sense of accountability. Has served this board, um, over the, over the years, deserved it well. She always takes time to ensure trustees are comfortable in their roles and feeling including, feeling included in the board activity. In fact, Illinois College Board, Community College Trustees Association recognized Joan in twenty-eighteen with their professional, professional Board of Staff Member, Professional Board Staff Member Award, which recognized exemplary professional service to ICCTA Member College Board, Member College Boards. Joan I haven't read this yet. Joan's integrity and commitment to her role and JJC is unmatched. This is evident in the scholarship that was felt in her honor, which supports students seeking an administration assistance, AASA degree. Joan is the type of individual this award was created for. She was a truly an inspiration through her personal blend of intellect, support, and compassion. Congratulations, Joan. We got through that one, too. Thanks a lot. All right. We're going to have a closed session and, uh, at one point one, and, uh, that's gonna start now, and, uh, thanks, thanks all for coming.
No move?
Need the basis.
Sorry?
Close session for the
Oh, oh.
Two C sixteen.
Two C sixteen, right.
Motion made by me.
Second.
Kelly?
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski. Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Lee. Trustee Lozano.
Aye.
Trustee Mahalik. Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes. We're on again. So, uh, one point two, return this public session, which we have done. We've returned. One point three, business reports as needed. One point three one, faculty sabbatical leave.
I'd like to introduce Dean Lynn Mackey. She is with us virtually just to present an update to the, or request to the Board for a faculty sabbatical leave. Dr. Mackey?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I have a recommendation for sabbatical leave for spring twenty-twenty-three semester for Professor Elizabeth Petrie. She has been a full-time faculty member at Joliet Junior College since two thousand and nine, and teaches in the English, she teaches Spanish, excuse me, in the English Philosophy and World Languages Department. During her sabbatical, Professor Petrie plans to visit Spanish-speaking communities within the United States to familiarize herself with current linguistic and cultural norms by participating in cultural activities such as music and theater performances, family events, and community outreach volunteer programs. Then, using her knowledge of second language acquisition, she plans to develop a free course pack of materials to be used in Spanish one oh one and one oh two classes. Students will not have to purchase a textbook for those classes, making their education more affordable. In addition, she proposes to create a series of videos for students to see and hear authentic Spanish in use in situations that will be meaningful to their personal and professional life. The Faculty Development Committee has reviewed and unanimously recommended Professor Petrie's sabbatical application. Dr. Gray and Dr. Mitchell concur and request that the Board of Trustees support the recommendation and approve Professor Petrie's sabbatical leave for the spring of twenty-twenty-three semester in April. Thank you.
Thank you. Like a motion for that?
No motion.
No action on that one today.
All right.
It'll be up for vote in April.
All right, thank you. One point four, duty moment of silence.
Chairman and Board of Trustees, I would like to request a moment of silence for Derek Anderson, father of Sean Sanderson, women's basketball coach, and he's a success, success coach for the Center of Multicultural Access and Success.
Thank you. One point five, recognition of special guests. Do we have any special guests here, Madam Secretary?
There are no special guests.
Okay. One point six, selected reports, one point six point one, proclamation.
I would like to, no.
Go right ahead.
Uh, the Community College Month proclamation reader is Esli Ramos. Esli will attend the meeting in person, and she's here with us this evening. Esli is seeking a major in early childhood education. She plans to receive her associate degree in the summer of twenty-twenty-two. Esli is involved in multiple clubs, president of diverse, of disability awareness club, vice president of Latinos Unidos, a member of InterVarsity Christian Fellowship, and member of Active Mind. Esli is a first-generation student, and in her free time, she enjoys dancing, singing, arts and crafts, and the outdoors. Esli has a condition called retinitis pigmentosa, where she can only see out of the peripheral on both sides of her center vision, which seem blurry. She uses a cane, she reads Braille, and uses technology devices with screen readers, which are computer-like voices that read out loud anything on screen. I've been very fortunate to work with Esli on numerous occasions, and I welcome her to the Board this evening.
Whereas more than one thousand two hundred community technical and junior colleges, public and private, in the United States have contributed enormously to the richness and the availability of American higher education. Whereas the public and the private community junior college and technic, and technical colleges provide a broad array of educational services, which include transfer education, two-year associates, and degree programs, program certificates, for employment, basic skills, and education continuing, and community education. And whereas community colleges work in partnership with businesses, industries, and government to provide job training, assistance, and economic development. And whereas community colleges provide necessary resources, community service, including career development, job search, job search assistance, counseling, and whereas and, and developmental education. And whereas through these services, community colleges meet diverse and changing local needs, fulfill a vital function within the state's higher education system. And whereas community colleges provide an opportunity to obtain post-secondary education at a reasonable, reasonable cost within the community distance of their students, of their students' homes. And whereas Joliet Junior College is one of the thirty-nine community college district in Illinois, providing occupational, secondary and continuing education courses and services to more than one million Illinois citizens each year. Be it resolved that the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees hereby presents the month of April as Community College Month in Illinois and the, and District five hundred twenty-five, and encourages all citizens to recognize the value and opportunities available to them at Joliet Junior College and at community technical junior colleges throughout the United States.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion as of March ninth, twenty-twenty-two, to accept this.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please, Kelly?
Trustee Broderick. Trustee Budzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Lee. Trustee Lozano.
Aye.
Trustee Mahalik.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes. Thank you. One point six, proclamation design, designating April as Earth Month.
I'd like to introduce virtually Dean Petty-Zuccarello, who will read the proclamation this evening.
Good evening, everyone. This is a particularly timely proclamation in that just last week, we were notified by the Arbor Day Foundation that JJC has been approved as a tree campus, the higher ed division. So we're delighted by that, and, uh, many thanks to Maria Rayfac and her, um, sustainability intern, Andrew Fleeslieber, and our, uh, tree campus committee. So, without further ado, whereas Earth Month is celebrated at Joliet Junior College through the entire month of April with a focus on Earth Day, April twenty-second, and Arbor Day, April twenty-nine. Whereas Earth Month provides individuals numerous opportunities to learn and engage, including touring our arboretum and natural areas, hosting environmental speakers, and our Earth Day Expo. Whereas Joliet Junior College recognizes the importance of sustainability through its board policy, nine point oh four point oh oh, sustainability, adopted in twenty-twelve, which commits us to our core value of sustainability. Whereas Joliet Junior College Sustainability Initiatives help keep students, staff, faculty, and our community active and current in the ever-growing awareness of our society. Now therefore be it resolved that the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees proclaims the month of April twenty-twenty-two as Earth Month in Illinois Community College District number five two five.
Thank you. We have a motion, please.
Adopted this ninth day of March, twenty-twenty-two, I make the motion.
Second.
Please.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Lozano.
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik. Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes. Thank you for the earth. One point six point one, point six point three, Faculty Union, Dr. Bob Marcing.
Thank you, Chairman O'Connell. Uh, I have a few things. Uh, everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, sorry, I'm not, I actually had planned to be, uh, be there this evening, but I, um, something came up, I had to work from home. But, um, anyway, I wanna first of all say, uh, I don't know if, uh, if Joan is still in the audience, or, or she left, but I, I just wanna thank her for, um, she, she's one of the kindest, most pleasant human beings you'll ever meet, and, and, and was so helpful for me over these, over these many years, and, uh, always, always dealt with me with a smile, and that's not always easy. And, uh, I just want her to know that, uh, she, she means a lot to me, and I, and I, and I will, we will all miss her greatly. I just wanted to also mention, Esli is one of the, uh, reporters, one of the, uh, columnists, writes columns for the student newspaper, and I suggest that when you get a chance, uh, read those. She's a really good writer and has a really interesting perspective on things. Couple other quick things. One is, just, uh, just to, not, not to reply to, but I just wanna, uh, clarify something that, that was, uh, came up in last month's meeting about, uh, faculty and, and, um, classes and loads, and, and how many people we teach and things like that. I just, and I think it was just an act, I think it was accidental, but, uh, everybody should know that we teach multiple classes. Many of us teach five or more classes, and in each of those, we have anywhere from, depending on the limits of the class or whatever, uh, twelve to thirty-two students in them. So this semester, for instance, I have a hundred and three students. And we also do a lot of other things, which, uh, is part of our job, and, um, we, I love my job. And I think, uh, we, uh, we have a good agreement with the institution. Um, but we also create courses, we also work with students, we also prepare oh, reports for state and, and federal agencies, et cetera. I mean, we do a lot of that stuff. That's all part of our work. So I just wanted everybody to know that, um, the scope of the, scope of the job was maybe a little bit, um, more than was, uh, indicated last month. The, the only last thing I wanted to say, and this is emotional thing for me, and I think it is for a lot of people, is I just wanna say that I, I hope that we can all, um, reach out in our way, do what we can to support uh, the people of Ukraine. My grandfather is Ukrainian, uh, came here about a hundred years ago. And, uh, you know, I grew up in that culture, part, partly in that culture, partly in my mom's culture. Also have Polish in my blood, too. Uh, and, and I know everybody watches, is watching that stuff on television, and just your heart's breaking. So if we can do anything, please do what you can, um, for these children, these mothers, these, these people who are, whose lives, who were, who were walking to the supermarket on a Monday and, uh, dodging orders on a Tuesday. And it's, it's just completely unbelievable what's happening. And so I, I just ask that everybody keeps them in their heart, and, uh, do what you can through whatever agencies you can work with to help support, uh, these folks, uh, as we go forward. And, and that's all I have for you this evening. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to address the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. As always. One point six point four, faculty adjunct.
Good evening. Glad to see everyone. Um, as you know, we have, after about ten months' work, reached the, the finish line with our contract. Um, and I just wanna say again how much I appreciate the respectful and professional way that we all conducted this and, and reached something that I think works for everybody. I also want to echo Dr. Marcing's comments about Ukraine, and, and just kinda remind everybody that we are, we really should be grateful to be where we are, um, and have what we have, and the things that we worry about, our contracts and the price of gas, and those kinds of, of things when others around the world are losing their homes and their countries. So again, just to echo his thoughts, to do whatever we can to, to help that situation. That's all I have for tonight. I appreciate the opportunity and wish everyone well. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Glad you came. One point seven, minutes, approval of minutes, regular monthly meeting, February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Lozano.
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik. Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes. Uh, communication for Ms. Rogers.
There are no communications, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. One point nine, approval of the agenda.
No move?
Second.
Go ahead, Madam Chairman. Madam, Ms. Rogers.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski. Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
Trustee Lozano.
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes. One point zero. One, approval of the consent agenda is presented.
No move?
Second.
Like to have item two point one two, uh, removed and discussed in closed session.
I'd like two point one point one for discussion.
Anything else? All right. We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion in second with us. Those two items pulled, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Need a vote?
Yes. Please.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Lozano.
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes. All right. Two point one point one?
Yes. No move?
Second.
My question is, uh, President is recommending, um, a candidate, appointing a candidate for the full-time position of an interim dean of Applied Arts for the Workforce Education and Training effective March first. This candidate apparently is also currently an employee, correct?
Correct. It's an interim position.
Correct. Is this candidate, uh, going to be applying, or have they applied? Do you know?
I'm gonna refer to Dr. Farmer, who oversees this.
So your question is, I'm sorry, I just
It's okay.
If this candidate has applied for the position.
Or will be applying, uh-huh.
Is it safe for me to share that or not? Given the fact that this candidate is an interim candidate, I, I do wanna defer to our
You're talking about the full-time.
The, the appointment of the interim, uh, dean.
And, and, I didn't hear your whole question.
Just trying to see if
Will she, will she, and she apply?
Will, will this person also be applying for the position?
We don't know whether she will, or she not, or man or woman, but, uh, going forward, but this candidate would have the opportunity to.
Correct.
Whether they do or not is up to them.
Okay. So was there a process in the appointment? What was that process?
So the process is that, um, we sat down and spoke with this individual who has extensive experience. Um, I just wanna highlight, 'cause I, I wrote a few notes here, 'cause I assumed that someone would inquire about this candidate. In addition to her extensive experience in this area, um, she also will provide supervision for a very comprehensive area. Um, in addition, she will be overseeing fifteen grants that we have in that area, as well as, um, adult education, which, um, Trustee Morales, you're very familiar with that area. Um, culinary arts, uh, workforce development, including our small business, um, area that continues Culinary arts, workforce development, including our small business area that continues to grow and develop. So we sat down with this individual and had some significant conversations about this leadership opportunity. She does have the experience. And based on that experience, we made a recommendation to Dr. Mitchell to move this person into this interim role. So that's why we're here in front of the board requesting this appointment of Carrie Peter.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Just, I want to make sure that all candidates, whether internal, external, are given the same opportunity. So if this person is very well qualified, I'd like to, I'd like to think that they are going to be applying for the job. But that's, that was my question, if they were given the opportunity to apply as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. 2.2?
You have a vote on 2.1.1, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Let's have that vote.
No move.
Sorry, been a motion and a second, so we just need the roll call vote.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Lozano?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes. Now 2.2.
Because it is related to a personnel and it's HR-related, I've asked, do you have it moved into executive session?
So, all right. Mr. Chairman, what we normally do or what would be appropriate to do then is just, I'd ask for the purposes of amending the agenda, a motion to consider agenda item 2.1.2 following closed session and return to open session 9.10. So if there's a motion and a second on that, then we'll move it to the back and consider it after that.
All right. Then let's make it so.
Your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We're still going to take action on that, right, Carl?
It'll come back.
At the end?
At the end.
Okay.
Then if there's action to be taken by the board, you know, which on any proposition, you can pass it, you can not pass it, or you can table it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Kelly.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Lozano?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, so just for the record, Mr. Chairman, 2.1.2 will be considered after 9.10. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are at 2.2.2.1? That's consent. 2.9. Reports. 2.9.1. President's request acceptance classified. That's accepted?
That's all been approved down to, we're on number, number six.
We're on number six. Okay. New business, old business. 6.1. Board of Trustees. Approved the Kudo multilingual meeting extended for the campus, campus use.
Second.
I would like to call for Trustee Garcia-Gian to recuse herself from the vote.
I think we're getting a little far afield here. We're going to have a, we're going to have a motion and we're going to have a vote. And that's where we're at right now. We've talked about this ad infinitum, or ad finitem, and there is no new business to cover. So I would ask, I would ask that we move forward with a vote.
Just as a point of order, Mr. Chairman, for the record, there's been a motion by Trustee Garcia, there's been a second by Trustee Morales, I believe.
Yes.
And so it is, it is up for discussion. So if there is a new comment that somebody wants to make, I understand that the board is trying to say, we've talked about it a lot, if you have a new comment, make a new comment, but there's been an issue, I'm just fielding here. A trustee Lee has raised an issue. And so it does have to be entertained. Whether anything happens with it or not, it does have to be entertained.
All right. If it's a new issue, if it's new business, then we can proceed.
Trustee Garcia-Gian signed the student petition. She not only signed the student petition, she was the first signature two weeks before anyone else. I believe that is a conflict of interest and that she should recuse herself from the vote.
I don't believe that was just a student petition. I think that was a community petition. And as a community petition, I think she has every right to sign that.
Also, as a trustee, she misrepresented the college in the student petition. I will quote what was stated. Moment here. I can, I pretty much have it memorized. It stated that we have no translation services at the board. I understand that she can sign it if she liked, but it was introduced as a student petition. I don't believe it qualifies as a student petition if a trustee started it, and I believe that is a conflict of interest. Also, she misrepresented the board by stating in the, by signing that petition that we have no translation services at all at our board meetings. That is incorrect. So I take issue with her misrepresenting the board, and I take issue with her signing the student petition. And I am putting in a motion for her to be recused from the vote.
Question, Dr. Mitchell. We have ongoing multilingual translations right now?
Yes, it's live when you log in and you watch, you get the closed caption and you can select from 16 languages.
We have interpretation right now because translation and interpretation are two different things, as a reminder.
Do we have interpretation services?
We do not have interpretation. That was, that was kudo.
Got it. Okay. So we don't have interpretation?
I'm going to. I would refer to. Jim, are you raising your hand to speak or just saying hi? I'm trying to, okay, so I'd like to, I'd like to call on Jim Ser. Okay. Thank you.
As we speak.
Where are the live interpretation services? Because again, interpretation is a verbal message from one language to another. I know that we do have translation, but I do not see the interpretation that you're mentioning at the second. But again, it's not a verbal message from, we're talking about a subtitle, correct?
I would just like to read the petition. The school should make it their job to make it accessible to have translations for different languages. We have done that on this board. People in the community aren't able to get the resources they need due to not having more than one language being accessible in the meetings. That is untrue. The most practical solution to this issue is for JJC to provide translation and interpretation services at their board meetings and events. The way this is worded is as though we do not serve our community and is misrepresenting our college. I did not appreciate the way that it was written. It is still up and out there for people to read this and to sign the petition. It was never taken down after the original post. And either way, you clearly are very tied to this personally. I believe your family started the position. So I believe that is a conflict of interest, and I am requesting that you recuse yourself from the vote.
I think it should be noted, too, that the administration did not come to us for this. This was decided on last year's board, the old board, and.
This is that new business.
This, pardon me?
This is that new business, what we're talking about.
No, 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 it's considered old business. But I mean, I'm saying that it was not brought by the administration because administration and Dr. Farmer's presentation and Jim Ser's presentation. We have the services that look like we didn't at that one meeting, which I felt, as I shared before, that we didn't offer. We do. I think we're covered. And it wasn't the administration, Dr. Mitchell's team, that came and asked for it. It was basically the old board that did. And we should have really discussed this again when new board members came on to see if we really wanted to pursue it or not. And I thank administration for doing all the work they've done. It's commendable. I think we should move forward with the vote.
Attorney Carl?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't believe that trustee Garcia should have to refuse, recuse herself from the vote. Can you give a legal opinion on that?
Well, yes and no. So conflicts of interest cover a broad range of spectrums. You guys have a policy on it. And I just pulled it up to read it while we were having our discussion. And it says, "A trustee shall not directly or indirectly engage in any outside business, financial or professional transaction or other activity which conflicts with the interests of the college that might reflect adversely upon the college or which otherwise interferes with the trustee's ability to discharge their duties impartially. Any possible conflict of interest must be discussed with the full board of trustees immediately upon recognition of the existence of a potential conflict." So I think what trustee Lee is doing is bringing this conflict forward. Whether or not it's a conflict of interest, this policy allows this board to determine that. So, you know, does trustee Garcia-Gian have a financial interest in Kudo? No, I don't believe that's the case. Does she have some other professional activity or other professional relation? That's probably not the case. I think what's being raised from a legal perspective is that the trustee has acted in a manner that I believe, and I'm interpreting somewhat here, created the impression that the trustee doesn't have the ability to be impartial because they participated in an activity that goes beyond acting as a trustee, because as trustees, you have access to other information that people that are not trustees have. So to frame it in the best way possible, fair to both sides, I think that's the, that's the dispute, is that the impartiality, the ability to be impartial, has been affected by the conduct. So that's for the board to decide, and it's also for trustee Garcia-Gian to decide. So if the board were to determine that it's a conflict, trustee Garcia-Gian, just, you know, as we've discussed in other instances, has the ability to make that determination for herself. And so whether she wants to recuse herself or not, you know, there's obviously very patent, obvious types of conflicts, okay? So if you were bringing a proposition, you know, and it doesn't really happen in the community college concept or platform very often. But in municipalities, for instance, you have a lot, you have to be a resident of the municipality to be on the board. And sometimes people do business in the municipality, and if there's something brought before the municipality that would affect their business, that's an obvious conflict of interest, right? There have been times where various members that are associated with the board or board members themselves have had family relations that have worked at the college, and we've had to take action on those. Those people have recused themselves from those proceedings. Those are very obvious conflicts. This is, this one is not quite as obvious. I believe trustee Lee is raising an issue of impartiality that is clearly defined within your board policy, and it's 1.04 for reference. But it does say that the board should be made aware of it, and then the board should discuss it. And based on that, it's the board's decision whether there's a conflict, but it still doesn't preclude, again, gets to our discussion about what can the board do or not do. The board can raise issues, the board can determine there's a conflict, but at the end of the day, each of you trustees individually has the responsibility to determine for yourselves what is or isn't a conflict. That's why I say yes or no. I want to give a full answer to your question.
I think she's still within her right to make a vote for this. And do we have interpretation services? If you have a non-English speaker arrive at the city center or at the Romeoville campus, do we have interpretation services available for them to assist them with admissions, application, financial aid questions, not translation, interpretation? Do we have that available?
Farmer? We have translation available, not interpretation.
I'm sorry?
We have translation available. So if someone.
You said not interpretation?
So if someone decides to visit city center and the person speaks Spanish, we have a few staff members who are available that can interpret and provide support for that particular parent or student in all the areas of student support services.
We have interpretation?
Yes.
And we have, we don't have translation. I'm not finished. We don't have translation, though, right?
So define translation for me.
Let me help you. So translation is changing one, a written message from one language to another. Okay? Which also includes side translation, which is, again, it doesn't have to be an exactly written message to another written message, but it could be a written message to a verbal, like for example, if this form is in English.
Yes.
I'm able to read it to someone in Spanish.
Yes.
Without modifying the words. Interpretation, as a reminder again, is a verbal message from one language converted to a different language using the oral modality, so spoken.
So we actually have both?
Okay.
And that was given in your presentation last month?
That's correct.
So ladies, it was given, it was very well presented to us by Jim and by Dr. Farmer. I think we need to move forward.
So what do you want to do first?
Well, the motion that's on the floor for the board is a motion to approve 6.1. It's been motioned and seconded. There's been an issue of conflict raised. The board's had a discussion of conflict. Whether or not trustee Garcia-Gian, excuse me, chooses to recuse herself is up to her. There's no motion before the board pending on that. So.
Good.
Am I trying to make that, if I'm trying to make that determination?
Yes.
You can comment on it if you like. You don't have to. But really, it's your determination when you're called for the vote. You have to, and to recuse yourself, you just abstain. That's what you say.
And I will not. Okay.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Kelly.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Trustee Lozano?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Bzinski?
No.
And trustee O'Connell?
Yeah, I always get, I get to do the last pass, so you guys are up.
Go back to trustee Mahalik and then trustee Broderick.
Correct.
Trustee Mahalik?
No.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee.
Yes. 6.2. Cybersecurity.
So there was a request from trustee Mahalik earlier this week. He had some questions about cybersecurity at the institution. And so tonight, I'd like to ask Jim Ser to come to the podium and provide an update on what we're doing to be proactive in light of the war.
Yeah, no, I just heard there's going to be, that this is going to go different ways, and there's probably possible cyber attacks coming all over the place. So with financial institutions and also anything they can disrupt. So just wanted to get, get our, where we're prepared at and what's going on, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you, board of trustees. Thank you, Jake, for the question. Appreciate that. So I have five quick slides. I'm calling it cybersecurity brief related to the Russia invasion of Ukraine and the ongoing conflict. So I don't know if you recall this slide, but back at our November board retreat, I presented this cybersecurity framework to the board. Really, the intent there was to educate the board on what best practice and discipline related to cybersecurity is. That contains five capabilities: identify, protect, detect, respond, and recover. And so I'm not going to read what each of those are, but I wanted to just kind of refresh your mind about presentation I had given back at the retreat in November. So top threats requiring our institution, our organization's action, or the board's, the things that the board should be concerned about relative to cybersecurity. And when you look at this chart related to the Russian invasion of Ukraine, it really kind of falls into this upper-left quadrant of being management critical from the standpoint of state-sponsored attacks, as well as the rapidly increase in phishing attacks that we're seeing, not necessarily related to the Russia-Ukraine conflict, but in general, higher education is one of, if not the most targeted industries related to phishing attacks. So I wanted to highlight, when we talk about the Russia-Ukraine conflict, we're talking about this upper-left quadrant being critical for. being critical for, for board information and action. So again, getting back to those capabilities, this was an incident that happened back in 2016. You called a Ukraine breach. It was a coordinated attack on the Ukraine power, power grid, again, back in 2016. This is just an example of something, if we had experienced a cyber attack here at the college, we would leverage this best practice and methodology about how we would respond to that cyber attack. So with respect to this attack on the Ukraine power grid, we would, if you look into the protect there, there was a state-sponsored attacker that gained access into the power, power company's grid. The detection, the attacker flooded call centers to disrupt customary reports of, of power outages. And then lastly, how did the organization recover from that attack down on the lower capability quadrant at the bottom? And then from our organization perspective, we would then say, and come to the board and notify you that says, here's what we found in this attack. These are the vectors that we've seen and here's how we have responded and accordingly to each of those vectors of the cyber attack. So again, this is just an example. The college has not been attacked or even received an increase of threats relative to what's happening with the Russia-Ukraine conflict as we stand here today. However, there are actions that we take and are being taken to protect the college and our mission-critical information assets. Some of those are, we're disabling legacy authentication methods, making sure that we're enforcing modern authentication protocols. We are executing monthly vulnerability scans with a new tool that we invested in this year, Tenable Nessus is the name of that. We have a vendor risk management tool by a company called BitSite. So companies that the college does business with, we can score those companies based on their cybersecurity readiness. So it's a great new investment that we've made there to, to make sure that we're checking the companies that we do business with to make sure they're up to speed from a cybersecurity perspective as well. We're utilizing a software called Mindcast to provide enhanced email security. We are, if you haven't heard, you'll, you'll hear a lot about this notion or philosophy of zero trust. So we are doing, we are starting to do and implement zero trust here at the college. Part of that is making sure that we're managing administrator level access to all of our systems here at the college. We are blocking, based on the federal nation-state blacklist, we are blocking high-risk countries. Russia happens to be one of the countries that we are blocking currently. We're utilizing a secret server software from Thicotic to manage accounts that have privileged access. So as you have different roles and responsibilities within the college, people have elevated privilege or elevated access to our systems, we have a software in place to make sure that we manage those accounts appropriately here at the college as well. We've already implemented multi-factor authentication for staff and faculty as part of our Workday student implementation. We will also be implementing multi-factor authentication for our students. That will be coming later this year. And then lastly, this is something we always do, we're always networking, consulting with our cybersecurity peers in the industry, peers in higher education, peers in the community college system, partners, talking to our consultants. We're part of many advisory groups and councils and I can tell you, there's been a lot of conversation on this topic. Generally speaking, on the, on the cybersecurity topic, a lot more conversation here in the last couple of years. But again, specifically in the last few weeks, a lot of conversation about the Russia-Ukraine conflict and things that we need to be aware of as we protect, again, the college's mission-critical information assets, both now and into the future. And so lastly, I just put together a slide of some of the news items. There's, you know, do a quick Google search, you'll find a ton of this. But there's, here's five or six great articles on the topic. If, if you have some free time at night and on the weekends, you want to, you want to do some extra reading, I, I propose those to, to take a look at. And then lastly, lastly, the US government, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, CISA, that is the US Development Agency that governs cybersecurity. They have a great website, there's something there called Shields Up with a lot of great information, recommendations on best practice. They talked about the threat level. They talk a lot about the Russian-Ukraine conflict and what company, not only companies should be doing, but also what as individuals we should be doing to protect ourselves as well. So I wanted to provide a little bit of information about that as well. And so with that, I think I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
I appreciate it. Sounds like we're, we're prepared here. The one thing that I want to just check back on, and we got some large fund balances, fund balances in our bank institutions. What's their policies for if there's hackers that go in there and disrupt that? Is that something?
Jeff Heap, we had provided the response in writing. Jeff, are you online?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
We reached out to the banks, I mean, a few of them, we've gotten, there's a, I'm not going to draw a blank on what the SOC 2 report stands for, but if I get back to my email from BMO on that. I mean, the banks, even I know a lot of our logins, it's a little ridiculous what it takes to even get logged in and they've had multi-factor and callback stuff for years on that stuff. The other item, SOC report, it's a system, something controls. That one's very much on how they're protecting data and includes cyber in it a little bit. A few of them have those done. The others, they're very extensive on what they do from what we have so far. It's also one of those, any funds we have at a bank, they're either FDIC insured and/or collateralized. So I mean, everything at least is collateralized.
I believe the FDIC insurance is only up to a certain dollar amount though, isn't it?
Correct, $250,000. And anything above that, we'd have collateralization.
We got, we got a lot more in some of those banks than $250,000, so.
Agreed, and that's why it's always collateralized according to our investment policy.
Okay, well, sounds like we, we crossed our eyes and doubted, crossed our Ts and doubted our Is on that, so. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Thank you both, thanks Jim, thanks Jeff.
I do have one more question on old and new business. Um, I know that, okay, I know that, you know, we, we had the vote on the kudos. But I also noticed that in the last couple of meetings, we've had two translator, what do you, I mean, what do we call them?
Sign language interpreters.
Sign language people. What's the cost that we're paying for both of them to be here? Do you have that information?
Yes, I had asked Dr. Farmer to gather that.
It is actually $40 per hour.
For a person.
Forty hours per person, per hour, correct? Yep.
Okay, and I know that the board last year decided that decision. Are we seeing, and I'll ask, are we seeing any benefit to doing that? Because I don't think the new board members have had the opportunity to know if we should be still doing it or not. I'm bringing it up as a cost sensitivity. I see that we have two here, so that's basically $80 that we're paying an hour for someone to do this. Is there any way of monitoring this, that we see if there's any usage? Because if we have the translation that you've said and they can read what's on the lines of the translation, do we still need to have this done at the meetings?
Jim, I'm going to call you up to the podium again, you're on call tonight.
Thank you, trustee Broderick. So I think the, the short and quick answer to that is our American Sign Language interpreters are on our live stream video of the meeting. There is a separate live stream for the Spanish interpretation and translation, so that is separate. Of, of the live meeting, you know, we're typically somewhere between 15 and 18 viewers at peak over the course of a two-hour meeting of the live stream of the, of the board meeting to the public.
Okay, so we're at 160-plus for each meeting because our meetings have been going more than an hour. If we go in and tip into the next hour, then we're charged another 40 plus 40, which is 80. So I'm going to ask that we bring that back as an item on the next month's agenda? If we should continue doing that? Because if we have the services that it seems as we appropriately do and it's minimal activity of people watching it, how many are really watching it for that? And if we have $80 an hour and we're cost sensitive as we are, I think we need to look at bringing that back on the April board meeting for a discussion.
Bring it back under old, new business and we'll have the details provided for you.
I think so, under old and new business-
Background information because that falls under Americans with Disability Act.
Right.
But we would need background on what are we obligated to do on that side as well. Just to be clear, we, we can't differentiate of those 15 to 18 viewers, who's watching it for American Sign Language versus just who's tuning in to, to hear and-
No, I know, but we can identify who employees are and who are outside people. And if we look at the list of the 15 to 18, how many are employees, how many are outside viewers?
So I know this is hard to clarify a bit, just because there's a lot of technology involved. But the teams meeting, this teams meeting is a different meeting than what we provide via a live stream to the public. We have separate viewers, that's a live stream to the public. The teams meeting is separate, it's invited guests, administration. And then the live meeting itself is streamed live to the public, so anybody can kind of click on that link and have access to the meeting. That's the purpose of the American Sign Language interpreter is, is for the live stream meeting. It's not for the teams meeting that we sit in today.
Hey, just a point of clarification then, being that we had the closed session at the beginning of the meeting, they were here initially at 5:15, 5:30. So right now, we are now into three times that cost factor, correct? Because of the extension, okay? Thank you.
We'll have, we'll have a comprehensive presentation.
Thank you.
I would like to add something. We were trying to be more accessible, so I don't think, we didn't approve Kudo, okay? But now we're going to go back and take away the sign language interpreters. I don't think that's going to be the right call for us to make. This, we're trying to make sure that everyone is able to access the information and those $40 per hour in terms of making sure that our community members that need that service are able to access it. I don't think we should go back and remove it.
In all sensitivity, Nancy, with the fact that you voted no for the tuition increase and we're watching dollars and cents, I think any, any dollar that we-
We're getting a little far afield with this again here now. Let's, let's move forward, let's move forward.
We're saving $181,000 today?
Let's move forward, please.
Okay, fine, we have the money though and that shouldn't be taken away, thank you.
Have it on the agenda next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
7.1, new business, first reading, board policies.
Okay, so I am just going to go over really quick, a short review retaliation. 7.1, policy 0, 2.01, 0.4 retaliation. States that we have a commitment to prohibiting discrimination and outlines how we prohibit retaliation. There were no major changes. 7.2, policy 2.04, 0.19, fringe benefits for full-time administration and professional staff. As well as 7.3, policy 0, 2.04, 0.20, fringe benefit time support staff, non-union. We added as defined in institutional procedure, 0, 2.04, 0.02, to satisfy Maureen's request that we are on tuition reimbursement for employees and salary adjustments for degree completion. 7.4, policies 3.16, 0.00, student identification. States all students are to wear certification while on campus. Suggested, um, 7.5, policy 8.04, 0.00, local debt recovery program. States that we participate in a local debt recovery program and that we develop and maintain procedures for program implementation. Just a brief overview of what all of those policies are, since they're on first read.
Thank you for the addition of the procedure piece in both of those, 7.1 and 7.2, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, 8.1, old business.
All that was approved under consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So now we're at reports. 9.1, JJC Foundation report.
Good evening. Plans are underway for the Night of Stars event on Thursday, April 28th. This is a reminder to let us know if you are planning to attend. All of you trustees should have received an invitation in the mail and we will forward to celebrating our award winners and thanking our generous donors. My scholarship specialist participated in a recruiting event at Juliet Central High School last week. The event was very successful and was coordinated by our college enrollment team. The foundation offered a raffle for one $500 certificate towards tuition and a winner was chosen. My team spoke to over 80 high school seniors. There is a similar event planned for Juliet West High School next week. The fall scholarship application process is open to students and will close on May 15th. We are seeing a significant increase in the, in the amount of applications compared to last year. The foundation board has agreed to award an additional $350,000 towards scholarships for Fall '22. We are planning to use those funds for students to access after the May 15th application deadline. We find that many of our students don't make the decision to attend until the summer months. Last year, the foundation gave $250,000 for the Step Up and Smart Start scholarships. Our employee giving campaign will kick off on Monday, April 4th. Last year, our employees gave over $90,000 to the foundation to support the Student Emergency Fund and various academic scholarships. The theme for this year's campaign is baseball. Each participant will receive two free tickets to a Slammers baseball game, which will be held on May 31st. That day, it will be JJC Day at the ballpark and Dr. Mitchell will be throwing out the first pitch. Hopefully this year's campaign will help our students get a home run. I'm sad to report that one of our longtime donors, Rose Mancuso, passed away last month. Rose has been a generous donor to the foundation, supporting our high school merit scholarships and an endowed scholarship that supports women in allied health. Her gifts totaled a result of over $108,000 to help our students. The next foundation board meeting will be Wednesday, May 18th at 7:30 a.m. On behalf of the foundation board and myself, I want to thank Mrs. Joan Tierney for her 26 years of service to the college. Joan worked for several of our past presidents in the board of trustees. Joan is one of the kindest, most professional women that I've ever worked with at the college. I wish her an abundance of happiness and good health in her retirement. This is the end of my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Mulvey.
Thank you.
9.2, representative of ICCTA with alacrity, Ms. Broderick.
Thank you. Mine will be a short report since last month was such a long one. On Friday, March 11th and March 12th of Saturday, at the Holiday Inn in East Peoria, we will have our quarterly meeting for the ICCTA. We will have our trustee roundtable that'll be on Friday, along with the Community College Financial Literacy that will be discussed in the afternoon for the afternoon session. We'll have three special speakers, one from the ICCB, one from the Blackhawk Community College and one from Lincolnland Community College. They will discuss how community colleges are funded by state and federal funding and the tuition. And I think that's a big key issue because everyone is looking at the enrollment issues. They will break down all financial words so that all trustees understand it. You are all welcome to come to it. It's a good way of learning what we and our job responsibilities are when we are looking at budgets, cost factors, levies, and knowing where our fundings are coming from to run a school, as such as a school as ours. And if anyone would like to come, please let Kelly know and she can register you. But I am heading down there on Thursday night after our meeting with the presidential candidate's dinner.
Where is this meeting at?
It's at the Holiday Inn in East Peoria.
Kelly, can you register me for that? Or this Kelly, sorry. Could you register me for that?
Thank you. 9.3, student trustee report, Mr. Lozano with alacrity, please.
Thank you, everyone, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, awesome. Yeah, sorry, the wrong version of my PowerPoint got sent. Yeah, sorry, the wrong version of my PowerPoint got sent. So that's why it says that, but everything else is updated.
Good.
But thank you all. I just want to say. Are you controlled? No, I do not. Okay, so first, a couple of things I'm going to talk about. Women's History Month, Student Government, Spring Fling, Comfort Zone, Active Minds, Discover JJC, and Study Abroad. So first, I just want to highlight a couple of events that were going on with Women's History Month. So happy Women's History Month for one. Shout out to all the wonderful women in our lives throughout the United States. You have truly contributed much, and thank you, Dr. Mitchell. And just to kind of highlight some things, we did a couple of events, as you can see, March twenty-second, March twenty-fourth, and March thirty-first. This was a big collab between the DEI Office Career Services and OSA. So that was a really cool collab right there. A little update with Student Government, not a huge one, but again, we are helping out with the presidential search. We are very excited. We will be practicing tomorrow very early in the morning for this. So as everyone, the schedule has been released, so I can say, we are very prepared. I have a student government member here today with me. So we are very excited to be able to contribute our perspective to this search. I will say, this is very exciting for us, and hopefully that will provide a very good, like I said, good perspective to bring back to the board for you, and I'll be in the interviews as well. Spring Fling, that was a success. That was actually just today. I went to it. It was kind of like a little event to bring everyone together. Little, yeah, little kind of, they had painting there, watercolor painting. They had hush puppies. I had two of them. As some of you know, I have quite an appetite if you went to the San Diego trip with me. So I was tempted to have four, but I had to control myself. But yeah, there was a karaoke there. A lot of people were singing, and as you can see, I'm right there in the corner with Dr. Amy Sims eating a hush puppy. And yeah, it was very successful. A lot of people really enjoyed it. I was able to come, go right after class for about an hour. So I thought it was a great event to kind of just bring everyone together, kind of relax after class. And then we had the Student Leadership Training, N S L S. A lot of students were inducted into this, like last semester and this semester. I was actually inducted last semester. It's a kind of a leadership training course. It's almost like PTK, but similar. So I was, they had a big training for that last week. As you can see, that room was very crowded, and that was just kind of the, I don't want to call it a syllabus day, but kind of the orientation for that. So that got started this semester. Then Comfort Zones. Again, we're having a Comfort Zone series. We used to do these before the pandemic, and we were doing them online, but OSA usually has, again, it's kind of like a gathering event where, you know, you come after class, you had a long day, you're studying, whatever it may be. You go to OSA, there's free soup, there's free bread. Of course, I would have two bowls of soup. And it was, they usually have entertainment. You get to meet fellow students. You can play games. They got board games in there. So that was kind of the, back before everything was online, that's how it went. Then they went online, but now they're kind of back in person. So it's really nice. I haven't been able to attend one, though. I've been quite, I've been on the run for quite a while, but I want to go pretty soon. I know, I think they're going to have more, but today they had one like at four thirty, but I wasn't able to make it. Then Active Minds, I want to give another shout out to this club right here. As you all know from my survey last, last board meeting, mental health has been quite an issue, and it continues to be an issue. So I just want to give a big shout out to Active Minds, staying strong, having speakers that encourage mental health, how to, how to maintain your mental health, you know, how to calm yourself, things like that. So I just want to, again, give a shout out to Active Minds. This was one of the speakers they had earlier in the month. They're going, I, you know, I've been seeing flyers all over the place for more speakers coming soon, so that's one. And then they're also going to have a mental health first aid. Again, another great contribution to the mental health problem we have. Again, you pay, I think it's like twenty-three ninety-five you pay, you get training. I think it's like a, I think it's like a two-hour training? Yeah, two-hour training, and you learn how to assess and kind of calm people down who are having a mental health crisis. So that, that's again, I, I'm going to sign up hopefully for this. And I discovered JJC, again, successful. We had two hundred and twenty students attend, four hundred and eighty-six total attendance, so that counts the family and, you know, siblings, things like that. As you can see, it was quite bussin', as you can see, guys. Look at all these people. Haven't seen the halls like that in a while. Oh, I do miss it, I will say. But very successful. And then just a quick shout out, this actually happened tonight as well, athletic men's basketball. They made the, and I just had to write this one down for a second, the National Junior College Athletic Association Tournament they're playing at right now, versing Sand Hills Community College Four. You can actually tune in. It's live. That's a little link. I just took a screenshot of that little link right there. But yeah, congrats to them. Big shout out to them. Then Study Abroad, currently accepting application for summer and fall. Again, another exciting opportunity for students to study abroad. I already have friends who are talking about it, probably going to Costa Rica. So I'm pretty, pretty hyped for that. I'm excited for my fellow students out there who this opportunity is available for. So that's open as well. And yeah, I just want to wish everyone a great spring break. Hopefully, you can relax. I'm just telling Attorney Buck, I will be hitting the water fishing. So you guys have a good break, and are there any questions?
Go back to your first aid one. Is there a fee for people to do that?
Yeah, it's twenty-three ninety-five. It's a fee, yeah. It's not too bad, you know.
No, it's not, not bad at all compared to what they do charge.
Mm hmm.
That's good, very good presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
David, I want to say, I agree, a shout out to the men's basketball team. I think they are ranked like fourth or fifth in the country, and they're like, I think they only lost two or three times this year, right?
Yeah, they're doing very well.
Unbelievable.
Doing very well.
Good luck to them.
Yes, but yeah, it's, I knew I had to give them a shout out because they're doing very well right now, so.
You can select the link. I don't know if it'll still be on when we're, when the meeting's over, but.
Yeah, that link.
Yeah, would be great to.
Yeah, they won the game tonight.
Oh, they did win.
They did win.
Oh, okay.
Oh, nice. There we go. Yeah, so there we go, guys. They won. I couldn't provide an update. Well, thank you, Dr. Farmer, you know.
They should have. It's four hours past.
Right.
That's right. That's good.
Thank you, David. And thank you for your alacrity.
Welcome.
And I just want to give one, one thing. This is one of my last board meetings as student trustee. The process is on its way. So pretty soon, you guys will have a new student trustee, so be, stay tuned. That'll be next board meeting. So just want to say thank you, and I'll, I won't go, I won't go too teary eyed here, but I'll, I'll get into that next board meeting, but just a warning.
David, based on what you just said, you'll still be coming back to give us comments in regards to presidential candidates that you were assessing as you're seeing them?
Yeah, for sure.
So we'll still have input from you then?
Yeah, you will have my input, for sure.
Thank you.
And yeah, for sure, you'll have my input, but I'm just giving a warning, you know? But yeah, that concludes, thank you.
David, thank you. We can't say goodbye to two people tonight, okay? So no, thank you.
Thank you. Nine point four, Buildings and Grounds.
Well, I'm going to take this down so I can, you guys can hear me a little bit better. Tonight, we have a meeting, and we just have a couple of projects to be updated on. They replaced the J building elevators for CDV project, which is funded by them, is pushed off, I think they said, May or June is what they're thinking for a start date, and that's going to be replacing one J building elevator because you don't want to replace multiple because I'm the only one that climbed ninety-four flights of stairs to go up to Hancock in twenty-four minutes. I don't want you guys to have to do that, too, so. The next thing that we talked about tonight, actually, what we approved tonight was we're going to do some, some bits for repairing the leaks in the A building storefronts. We're going to move the Cisco lab and cybersecurity to the north campus, and also making some various parking lot improvements. In design for the following months, we lumped in a project, we're called HVAC projects, which is for the layman, is heating ventilation and air conditioning projects. So we're going to have a lot of those moving forward because we got some outdated equipment. But hopefully, as Alicia will tell you, it looks like we're going to get some help with that funding by the CDV because we're applying for that as well, which we were told tonight, the CDV, which is a state office, a grant basically, they basically paid, funded about seventy-five percent of our costs, and we were usually on the hook for about twenty-five percent of the costs is the usual norms for that. So a couple outstanding projects, we have the city center, those lights, those light towers, man, they're being fabricated right now, and then, but the panels were wrong, and they require another four to six weeks, so that project will continue to be delayed a little bit more. The respiratory therapy lab, the new doors are being manufactured. We ordered additional equipment, and they also ordered additional equipment. As you guys may know, with the shortage of labor, we were having a lot, long manufacturing times are going out further and further, so. But we're hopefully going to get those, these projects completed. The campus police station is looking phenomenal. Heard, if you haven't seen it, they said come on down, they'll give you a tour. And then Workday, Dr. Farmer informed me, is going fantastic, and there's not much you can say that. I know our staff put a lot of hard work into it, and new software is a vital part of this college and helps us succeed. So hopefully, this continues to be swimmingly success, and that's enough for the Buildings and Grounds Committee tonight, so.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes.
So I was in the committee meeting today, and what I was really pleased to see is some of the projects that we approved came in under budget, what we had budgeted for. So the EEAS lab expansion came in at twenty-four thousand under budget. The IMT lab renovation came in at a hundred and thirty-one thousand under budget, and the building storefront replacement rebid also came in at twenty-six thousand under budget. So the budgeted savings that we have was one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, which is, I'm so glad that these bits came in under because we, you know, these are funds that we could definitely allocate for other things that we need, that we had budgeted to use for this, but now we don't have to. One of those items would be our sign language and translation services that I'd like for you to consider.
That money would be utilized for capital projects.
I understand that, but you also have the discretion to move those funds if needed.
We can, we can look into that.
But good job on the bits, and I'm glad that we're saving a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
Really kudos to Pat and her friends.
Yep.
They do a great job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five point nine, Board Policy Committee report. Ms. Lee and Ms. Morales with alacrity, please.
I think Ms. Lee pretty much covered everything earlier, but go ahead.
The only other thing is that starting next Monday, Dr. Mitchell will include a link to our My JJC portal in her Monday reports so that it will make it easier for us to tend, to access our trustee portals, which I know is something that we had talked about.
Finance Committee, nine point six. And thank you, Michelle. Finance Committee report. James, Jake, Judy.
We are actually going to meet tomorrow. We have not met since the last time we were in the board meetings, but I do want to draw your attention to your packet this month. You got the comprehensive annual report ending June of 2021, and if you don't look at anywhere else in the book, I want you to take time to go to page five and just look at the four bullets underneath Financial Highlights, and it gives you a little bit of an idea, and you tie that into what we learned from Jeff Heap back in our January workshop, and you'll see where the tuition increase and all those conversations started and how they came about. So I'd actually like you to look at those and just look at the numbers, and again, this is last year's numbers. That's not this year's numbers, so don't read any, you know, savings into it other than, you know, you'll see what the trends are for those, you know, big dollar items. So that's it, Chairman.
Then tomorrow, we're going to be needing to review the new auditing.
Yes.
Companies.
Thank you. Nine point seven, President's Report.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to begin again by just sharing that our thoughts and prayers are with all of those families impacted in Ukraine, and we keep all of them in our thoughts every day. Next, I would like to, again, I'd just like to echo the comments made about Joan Tierney. Joan Tierney was with JJC for twenty-six years. I had the very fortunate opportunity to work with her in many capacities throughout many roles in my career here, and she has always been an amazing individual that has just been so kind, a huge heart, always smiled, I don't care what it was, and she was always willing to help everyone. And Joan, if you're listening, we wish you nothing but the best and happy retirement, and in a hundred and seventy-three days, I will also be free, and you and I can have many lunches together. Next up, I'd like to, again, congratulate, we had held our first celebration of our graduates for the Men Project. Thank you to trustee Lee for the introduction to Men and for being there virtually to congratulate all of our participants this year. I'd like to thank Professor Andy Neal for hosting the Illinois Native Plant Society Kankakee Chapter Session, held a week ago Saturday. I had the honor of welcoming all of our guests, and as always, a great turnout from all of our community partners. I also took it, I had the opportunity to meet with Crane Composite last week to thank them for their ongoing support by providing student scholarships for many of our students and to talk about future initiatives involving student internship opportunities. I had a great conversation with their CEO. They would like to come back to campus, revisit some of the programs that we have to see how we can expand our partnership in those interns within Crane Composite, much like I did with Amazon and Lyne Del Pasell and Oxable, so that's great to hear. Again, trustee Bazinski reminded you of your, the audit from Baker Tilly, and you also have, oh, so you have the, the reporting and insights of the audit from Baker Tilly in addition to the comprehensive financial annual report. I think we heard Dean Zuccarello talk about earning the Tree Campus Higher Education recognition from the Arbor Day Foundation for 2021. Thank you, Maria Rafeck, Professor Rafeck, and Andrew, our sustainability intern, as well as our entire Tree Campus Grounds Advisory Committee. We held, I think we heard from trustee Lozano, that Discover JJC was held just this past Saturday, an overwhelming success. Again, great, I've heard nothing but wonderful things from Dr. Farmer. I was in San Antonio over the weekend, just great turnout, great to see so many faces. All of our employees that volunteered and worked that day were willing to help and just stepped out and went over and above. Over two hundred and twenty prospective students attended, including family members, so a total of four hundred and eighty-six in total. Spirits were high as students met with faculty and staff to learn more about attending JJC, and nearly two hundred people attended the admissions presentation that morning. So thank you, Dr. Farmer, and the entire student development team, all of our faculty that were here on that Saturday. Next month, I would like to talk to the board. I am hopeful that everyone is supportive of returning in person permanently for the board. If you do not have any objections, the college campus, as you recall, we have masks are required through the end of March. This was largely due to the request from many of our faculty and our front-facing student development professionals that would like to get through spring break and get through the end of that two weeks, just to make sure that there isn't any surge. We are revisiting what April first looks like, reducing or minimizing, looking more towards the mask optional except for large spaces and classrooms. We'll be finalizing that decision in the coming week. So if the board is not objecting to that, we would like to return to permanently in person unless there would be some spike or something like that, but I just think it's much easier to have you here, and it would be appreciated. So if there are no objections, we'll plan that going forward. And then finally, happy March birthdays to trustees Jake Mahalik and Michelle Lee, and your cakes are in the bag. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Dr. Mitchell?
Yes.
I was hearing today that fall enrollment is increasing, is that my understanding?
It is. We are seeing an increase in our numbers, and I've been working very closely with Kelly and her team. Obviously, received a report from Student Development Division as far as what their outreach is. Marketing communications have been actively engaged. We are trying, we, the goal is to market that we are back in person. We want to focus on all the scholarships, the financial opportunities that we have, that we're going to be returning to more face to face. Obviously, we have seen a slight increase in the online classes, you know, from students. They are finding that to be a preference, but we are following their lead, but we're really anticipating a much larger increase in our enrollment for the fall semester, so I'm really excited.
Thank you.
And I just have a question. Obviously, we, you know, all would really, I think we all try to be here, but if there is any instance, will we still be able to zoom in or no?
Well, the.
Or not?
Yes, please.
So there's a virtual attendance policy that we have under certain circumstances, and so there's been some modifications to that based on, not just COVID, but there's just always revisions to those policies. So once, you know, assuming that we get back to what our new normal will be with, I'll just say generally no restrictions, then those standard Open Meetings Act policies just say generally no restrictions, then those standard Open Meetings Act policies and rules will go into effect and we do have an electronic attendance policy, so there, we'll go through that once we get there.
Okay.
It won't be as liberal as it is right now, that's for sure. And that's state statute, that's not a JJC policy thing. There's just certain requirements that you have to meet. Prior to COVID, you had to meet certain requirements in order to have electronic attendance and that was everybody, not just JJC.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. My report will be brief as always and.
Just have a quick comment. Yes, I want to mention, maybe this is slightly irrelevant, but you did mention some birthdays. My birthday is also in March.
Yay!
It's my golden.
Happy birthday, David.
Your cake will be here next month.
Okay, it's my golden birthday, actually.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
21.
21, yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Happy birthday.
Cake or?
Okay, wait, 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 wait.
Have a case of beer.
David, you're definitely not old enough where you just don't want to, if you told it's your birthday at that time, so.
That's awesome, David.
The wonder is in such a hurry to get this meeting over with.
Yeah.
They go.
My season, it's March.
Right, there you go.
Right, okay, your cake will be next month. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
I'd make it in June or July, so he has to keep coming back.
Right, a piece a month.
Okay, thanks again, David. All right, Joan Tierney, we can't say enough about Joan Tierney and, and we've all been talking about her, so that's good. I want you to remember that in the past few months, the Red Cross has been under siege by someone or something and for the past few months and it has been, had a very serious deal, very serious effect on the Red Cross and people who are trying to get where they want to go and trying to get their, their issues straightened out. Remember that yesterday was International Women's Day and let's remember that and remember that with everything that's going on here, we should all take it to heart, International Women's Day, and have a little more empathy and kindness and consciousness. And that finishes my report. We have a closed session and we'll be going to closed session. As soon as we can.
Do you have that?
It's a.
Under.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, okay, yeah. 2C 11, 2C 2, 2C 8.
2C 1.
Oh, I missed 2C 1. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, what we got?
Do we need to add anything under 2C 1 since I asked for 2 point?
No, you're under 2C 1, so it's fine.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just asking.
Will we be voting on that then when we come back in the?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why we amended the agenda so that people will know that if they want to stick around to hear how that vote goes, if it's voted on, then there will be at least some discussion, if not action, on that item. All right.
So moved.
Second.
Kelly.
Hi.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.